Paul.
Here.
Maria.
Here.
Susan.
Here.
Ruth.
Here.
Ryan.
Present.
Kim York.
Here.
Kim Bailey.
Here. If you'll join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to read our mission statement. It's preparing each student for a successful and meaningful life, and I'd like to point out that we've got Al Volker representing Dr. Carey Monses. He had a death in the family, so he is missing this. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor, motion passes unanimously. We are now on recognitions.
Well, we're gonna... Thank you, Mr. Kaufman. We're gonna start this evening by recognizing an excellent athlete that we have. We have with us Zach Starforce. Zach, if you want to come on up, please, sir. Let's give him a round of applause. Zach is being recognized for being a second-team All-State football player, also is first-team All-District, and is signed to play for Illinois State next year on a full-ride scholarship, so congratulations. You want to stand for a picture for Mr. Kaufman? Congratulations. Thank you. Yeah, I'm really glad that Mr. Kaufman was standing with Zach. That's great. As I stood by him, I'm like, oh my, see why he is playing football on a full-ride scholarship. Okay, so next up for our recognitions, we want to recognize our school board. It's School Board Recognition Week, and we want to just thank you for all the work that you do, think that countless hours, the support of our students and our staff, the high level of engagement our board has in our process and what we're trying to do here at Raymore Peculiar. We can't thank you enough, all of that for the extremely high pay of nothing, so we can't thank you enough. We really can't. So, we want to mention... Oh yeah, you did get some candy. I guess that will be your pay for this. We want to point out our posters that each of our school buildings have made and offer after our meeting for you to go ahead and take one of those and take them home and keep those, so it's just a sign of gratitude. We also have a video that we'd like to show. This was made from Eagle Glen Elementary School.
Good evening, Raymore School Board. I'm Mrs. Jones, Principal of Eagle Glen. For those of you who haven't officially met, I want to personally thank you for all of your efforts in helping and supporting the teachers and the students here in the Raymore School system. It's sincerely appreciated and probably not expressed often enough, but please know your hard work is noticed.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for the playground. It was super fun. I really appreciate how you put the playground up on top and then you put it on the laptop so we have more space to run around.
Thank you for the computers. We often enjoy all the learning that we do on our textbooks because whenever we get on our textbooks, we have such free time of rest and learning and reading like on edut and stuff. Thank you.
Second grade says, "Thank you for all your hard work and all the ways you show education. We appreciate it."
Thank you.
Hi, School Board. Thank you for your support. It's always good to know that we have a lot of people to have our back.
Hi, School Board. Thank you guys so much for everything you do for the teachers and the staff at Raypack, and most importantly, thank you for being there for our students. I really appreciate you.
Raymore School Board, thank you so much for everything that you do to support our learning and each and every student to help them be successful in their life. Once again, we just want to say thank you and we appreciate everything that you do.
So, we hope you enjoyed that. Our schools did a nice job recognizing you because they really do care, and the effort that you put in means a lot, so we do appreciate it. I have a proclamation from Jack Bond and a representative of Jack Bond that I'd like to read, and each one of you have a copy of that. And then we have a certificate for you as well, so we'd like you to come up. We'll recognize you and then we'll take a group photo. So, it says, "Whereas it's a privilege afforded to members of the Missouri House of Representatives that they are given the opportunity to recognize those individuals who have shown remarkable devotion, commitment to the preservation of our great state by preparing our future citizens to accept the monumental responsibilities that will inherit, and whereas it is recognized that a strong and effective system of public education is essential to the well-being of our future citizens, and whereas school board members should be accorded high public esteem, reflecting the value the community places on their role in a student's public education, and whereas," and it names each one of you, "is one of those extraordinary people serving in this state and its children, giving countless dedicated hours as a school board member in the Raymore Peculiar School District." So, this recognition is just another piece, and we wanted to know all of our community, our representatives that's around, appreciate you all. So, I'm gonna call you up. We'll start with Kim Bailey. Paul Kaufman.
Thank you, sir.
Maria Davies. Susan Edmondson. Ruth Johnson. Ryan Westcoat. And Kim York.
I'm really grateful for Kim York because I don't have to go back.
If we could stand up for a picture, we'd appreciate it. Thank you. Well, thank you. Zach and group, you certainly don't have to stay. You can stay if you want, but thank you. Congratulations, okay? Okay, we will move on.
I also want to thank the school board. All of you work very hard, and I very much appreciate that, all the work you guys do outside of the meeting.
And I would make a motion that you quadruple your pay, your current pay for next year.
I would like... Should we vote on...
Please do not. Ms. Hatfield, if you could ask them to check on the sound, if we could see if we could turn the sound up on these. I'm not sure it's possible, but we can check.
All right. Is there a motion on the consent items?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor, motion passes unanimously. We are now on public comments. Are there anyone... Did anyone sign up for public comments?
Not tonight.
We are now on the public hearing for 2018-2019 school calendar. Dr. Al Volker.
Okay, well, thank you very much. We're gonna start by a little bit about our process. We have a subgroup that's made up professional development committee members and Team Raypack members that begin calendar development process by surveying parents and asking for input on important calendar topics. So, that's the first thing that we have shown. Over 450 parents completed the survey. The subgroup then developed draft calendars and asked for additional input from staff. We received a lot of input from staff, took that input back to the professional development committee, and then back to Team Raypack as well. Then, we come to you tonight with a calendar for 2018-2019 to vote on and approve. So, looking at this, this is one piece. We'll start with the parent feedback. Looking across the parent feedback, they were asked to rank the following topics, keeping the start date later in August, similar to the 17-18 calendar. School out before Memorial Day, two full weeks of winter break, and a full week of spring break. And looking at the results, the highest and first priority is to make sure that school is out before Memorial Day. A lot of people start those vacations right at that time, and that's a high priority. And then looking at it, as you look still at that, the lowest priority ranked on the one to four was keeping the start date. See the blue column on the fourth? So, we definitely took that into consideration when we were looking at draft calendars, knowing that it's important that we get out before that Memorial Day for our parents, not as important quite that we started as late as we did this year. And remember, a lot of that start date was impacted relative to the construction. We had to worry about that. We had to build in that timeline. We do not have that concern, of course, for next year. Looking, if you scroll down a little bit farther, you'll see a little blend regarding the teacher-in-service days being held on federal holidays. Five being the highest priority, one being a low. It really was blended across. It was fairly even look. If you go down to the next topic, the teacher-in-service days on... Held on either Fridays or Mondays, that is definitely something our parents want us to continue. So, we absolutely looked at that and continued that in the calendar, either option, because that's overwhelming that the Friday and Monday is easier for a family, which for my family as well. It's just that's something that is. The last thing they wanted to... The last question was the no school for students the Friday for Easter weekend and the Monday after, and that was pretty high priority as well. See, we worked that. That's not always done. That's something we look at each year. The Good Friday, we have always, but the Monday following, we haven't always scheduled that as a professional development day. We did on this calendar based on this feedback. It made sense. Parents seem to think that would be very family-friendly as well. So, we want to do that. We want to, at the same time, always think of academic achievement and what we're trying to do for our students. Our parent feedback is extremely important when you're developing a calendar. So, the next thing that we did, we took those results and we backed to the staff, so if you scroll down a little bit farther, you'll see calendar feedback. From there, we developed Calendar One and Calendar Two. Calendar One kept a little bit of that later start date in August. It had some other nuances, but as you can see, Calendar Two, which is the calendar we are presenting to you, was the overwhelming favorite in this. It was not even really close. I mean, 76%, 75% to 25%. So, of course, we valued that 24.7%, but it was definitely outweighed by the other. And we'll show you what that... The next topic that we talked about regarding calendar was the parent-teacher conference feedback. Trying to get our parent-teacher conferences accomplished and doing it in a parent-friendly way is a priority. They're extremely important. That is a time where you really make that connection with your child's teacher and have that in-depth conversation, but we looked at the opportunity, and you'll see it was very close, to try something a little bit different, and hold them around Halloween to where our students would have the day after Halloween off, to where we wouldn't have elementary kids, which we have thousands that go out and trick-or-treat, and then come into school the next day, often sometimes less than successful. So, we looked at an opportunity, and it's not one we can do on every calendar, but this one, we had the opportunity to build into where we'd have parent-teacher conferences Tuesday night, and then have short conferences on actual Halloween, but not going into the evening at all, and then allowing our staff to leave at the end of their contracted time as well. We even have an extra opportunity within this that was brought to our attention, that we could possibly take our support staff, who work our evenings, who have never had the opportunity to, or rarely have the opportunity to trick-or-treat with their children, try and move their schedule up and give them the opportunity to go home and trick-or-treat as well. So, it was kind of an added bonus, and once Team Raypack heard that, it was included as a part of Calendar Two as well, which is the calendar that we're bringing to you tonight. So, that was the process. We took a lot of feedback. We continue, and we will every year, because every year, there's another piece of information that we think, you know, that's a pretty good idea. So, that is our process in the calendar. We're gonna show and display. If you want to go ahead and display the calendar, Michelle, you'll see it there. Yes?
We want to get... Open it up for the public to give comments first.
Well, I just wanted to commend the process. Excellent.
Okay, thank you.
Are there any comments from our public? Okay. So, are there any comments or questions from the board?
I like the layout of this calendar a lot better because I have this year's, and I looked at it compared to this, and I'm like, it really is helpful to have the days under the month.
The overall layout, okay.
Yes, of this is much better.
Okay.
Because you have the days under the month that they are off or half-days versus the old one had the calendar on both sides and then just list in the middle. This is much, much better layout.
I think we'll just have some people that will have to get used to it as any time you make a change, but it is, when you look at the month, you're able to see everything that impacts you right underneath that month.
Yes, that's easier.
I know last year's calendar, we kind of put in place because of the necessity of the construction. Had we taken parent input before, like we've done this year into the calendar? I know that we've taken some, but did you take... Did you give them the opportunity for more input this year?
I think this is our second. This might be our second, or maybe even our third. I think our just parents, as they get used to the opportunity to input and provide input, their comments, what we're looking for, we got a lot of really good feedback regarding just different components, different ideas. The Halloween idea came from a parent comment, parent feedback. So, I just want people to know that we take their comments and their opinion seriously, and we try. That doesn't mean we can incorporate everything, because a calendar is a process that you always have another side to it that maybe is disappointed with a piece of it.
Yeah. I'm gonna go ahead and close the public hearing, and we will discuss questions and things like that later. Let's go ahead and move on to the Raymore Peculiar School Foundation.
Tonight, Jody is not actually able to make it, so she'd asked to actually be included on next year. She had an illness in the family that she had to go attend to. I think we're all kind of seeing that and dealing with that in our community right now. We have a couple pieces of that that we're gonna talk about in the superintendent's report.
Perfect. All right, we are down... We are now down to action items, and now we are on the school board portion of the school calendar. So, questions and comments?
If we could go ahead and project that again, I'll just give you the quick highlights of it. In that, you'll see the start date moves one week earlier in August. What this really does is that helps even out the semesters. We did get some comments last year, especially from our secondary semester classes. Our first semester was in the 80 days, and second semester was in the 90 days. Well, that causes difficulty when you're repeating that class, so this calendar is much more even again. And lengthens the winter break. It continues with the week-long spring break. We modified the parent-teacher conferences around Halloween. Continued our pretty popular, I think, successful snow day makeup practice. I think that's going well. Good Friday continues to be a day off with a professional development day and the Monday following, and then, of course, we end our calendar before Memorial Day as our parents requested as their first priority. So, those are the highlights.
Any questions?
Thank you to all our staff who went to all the hard work to go through the process.
Yeah, a good group. We had a great group of teachers that really gave a lot of work and input in this.
Yeah, and I really appreciate the community survey and taking that into account.
Is there a motion?
I move to approve the 2018-19 school calendar as presented.
Second.
All those in favor, motion passes unanimously. We are now on Missouri Assessment Partnership Memorandum of Understanding.
Thank you. We discussed this in pretty great detail at our work session. I would like to hit some highlights for those that possibly weren't able to attend. The really, in March of 2015, the Missouri Association of School Administrators, we call it MASA, initiated a task force to research assessment practices, look at what we're doing in Missouri. We're working in coordination with DESI. They've recommended some changes, and we really believe these changes are very positive. We really do, as we discussed in the work session. But with this partnership, we're forming the Missouri Assessment Partnership. They'll work in cooperation with DESI to spearhead development of a common interim assessment, very similar to the NWA that we currently give, our three-through-eighth grade, and we've begun giving the NWA assessment in math, the high school level, to Algebra I, Geometry Algebra II. In fact, I was with the math teachers this morning at the high school talking about those results, and we got a lot of positive feedback about that as well. So, I'm very hopeful that the interim assessment looks very similar, or maybe is, our current assessment practice. I think it's important to note that the goal is not to expand the amount of testing we do. In fact, the long-term goal is to reduce it by replacing our MAP test at the end of the year. That would be the ultimate goal. We'd be replacing it because we'd have usable data throughout the year to impact instruction and to help our kids, and currently, the MAP does not give us that. So, that is the ultimate goal. We want the accountability. We believe that's important, but we'd also like actionable information to help our students.
I want to highlight... Oh, go ahead. I want to highlight that this is not the first time we've received this information. We have conversed about this on several work sessions, and it's been presented at several board sessions.
Yes, and I was going to say something.
Sorry.
Yeah, I think... I just wanted to reiterate that this... The MAP testing does not provide us with actionable information that is timely and actionable. It's at the end of the year, and it's really too late for it to be beneficial to students immediately.
Yes.
And so, the goal of this partnership is creating a test, an assessment that is useful, that is more of an interim test, where that information can be put to use immediately to help those students, and ultimately to replace the MAP test, which I'm so excited about this because it is going to help teachers tremendously, because, you know, one of the things that we hear is, you know, our kids spend so much time just prepping for the MAP test. Well, that is not a good way to learn, and this will accomplish the accountability that we need and, at the same time, actually help teachers teach students. So, this is amazing.
That's what we hope.
As I said at the work session, I'm very excited about this.
Well, and what's great is to hear the head of the academic department actually say that we want to do less assessment over time, because being a data-driven district means that we use the data to help make decisions, not that we're driven just to collect data, which I know sometimes that's what it feels like with assessment after assessment after assessment. So, hearing you say that your goal is to reduce the amount of assessments, I'll personally hold you to that.
That's fine.
Because I... Sometimes I think, you know, teachers, when they hear, oh, another assessment, you know, I love the philosophy that, you know, that our president adopted, you know, for every one new law, you have to take two off the books. I think we should do that for assessment, and I've said it before. For every one new assessment, we have to take two off that we use, you know, just to show that, you know, to teachers that it's not all about the assessment. It's about getting the data and then making the corrective adjustments within the way that we teach or within our curriculum, and so that it's actually... They see the usefulness of the tool and not it's just one more thing we have to do.
Purposeful assessment's really important, and as Ms. York said, and all of you have reiterated in our work session as well, we want it to be timely and meaningful and actionable. We also realize we need an accountability piece, and if this provides both those things, that will be a great thing for us. Now, there is a financial piece, so I need to highlight that quickly. Founding members will pay a one-time fee of 25 cents per student with $100 minimum. That would equal about $1,500 for our district for this first year. Then, for the 18-19 school year, a commitment, a financial commitment of $2 per student. Fee will be used to hire limited staff to oversee the project and work towards a statewide contract for an assessment vendor. More than 50 districts across the state have already expressed interest, and these are large districts with a student population base, and many very similar in demographics to us. So, that comparability piece, and we can have that common conversation, seems very powerful. I would definitely recommend approval of this MOU.
And I think I would just add, for those who didn't, you know, didn't hear the work session, this partnership is important because we need, first of all, the standard assessment, and the goal is to get DESI to waive the requirement for the MAP testing.
Yep.
And to do that, there are certain highly complex statistical things that have to be worked out, and we need the partnership as a whole in order to accomplish that, and so that's why we need to join in.
And it sounds like it's well on its way to getting the support, to actually gaining the leverage that it needs to make happen.
We really hope so.
Are there any other questions or comments? I would just like to add that by the time these items get on an action item on our agenda, we have discussed them several times. I know sometimes the public is like, you don't ask any questions, but no, we've...
We've talked about this before.
We have talked about this ad nauseam, so I just want to highlight that most of our questions have been talked through at a work session or a previous presentation.
So, I would like to make a motion to approve the Missouri Assessment Partnership Memorandum of Understanding.
Excellent.
All those in favor, motion passes unanimously. We are now on the Missouri Consultants for Education Policy Service.
Okay. Well, over the past year, our Policy Review Committee, this is another instance, and we have a lot of structures we've put in place in this district involving our board members as well, to review practices over time, and I think that's a really good way for the board to be connected and stay on top as your role as the administrative function of our district. So, the Policy Review Committee is one of these committees. We've discussed making the transition from the MSBA Policy Service to the MCE Policy Service. We discussed this at the Board of Education Retreat in June as well. Since that time, we've provided MCE with a list of current MSBA policies, about 40, that have been customized to meet the district needs over time. That list was provided to help establish a quote for making this policy conversion. The advantages to this and looking, MCE policy language is very concise. Just reading it, recognizing that, we hope that clarity is beneficial to our administrators and our staff when looking at policy. MSBA policy language can be less than concise. Let's just leave it at that. It's also very timely. We've noticed the updates, and we've seen updates from our other policy services that seem to be months after our required implementation date. We've seen that MCE is more timely in providing those updates when a legislative or case law change requires it. The ongoing cost for customizing updates with MCE is also less than half of the cost of the MSBA Customization Policy Service, so I think that's really important for this group to note as well. The anticipated transition date for the changeover for policies would be July 1. During this process, the interim, the Policy Review Committee will review the customized policies from MCE to ensure they meet our district needs. So, approval of the Memorandum of Understanding with the MCE Policy Service is recommended as well. Are there any questions?
Yeah.
I'd just like to say, you know, I support this. We have a great relationship with MSBA, and it's provided us a lot of opportunities, but it's also nice to have some separation so that you don't get too close to an organization to where people are like, well, you just implement everything that they say. So, you know, this gives us the ability to still be with the MSBA, but also have another set of eyes looking at different policy changes, as well as different interpretations of the law when it comes down, you know, because 10 different lawyers could look at the same, you know, statute that they pass, and everybody have a different interpretation. So, it's nice to get some, a little more distinction and separation from MSBA.
As one of the board members that sits on the policy committee, I know clear policy helps with clear follow of policy, and when policies are complicated or cumbersome, it gives opportunity for misreading of it. So, I like that it's a clear policy. I also like that the attorneys at MCE actually are trial attorneys arguing in the court of law on these topics, so they are current on that. Again, we love MSBA. They've been very...
It's important to note. They do a great job with meetings.
They do a great job, and we love their organization. They're very resourceful for us, and timeliness and succinct policy is the reasons we're moving over. Are there any other comments or questions? Is there a motion?
I move to approve the Missouri Assessment... Wait a minute, wrong one. Sorry, guys. I move to approve the Memorandum of Understanding with the Missouri Consultants for Education Policy Service.
Second.
All those in favor, motion passes unanimously. We are now on board policies. All those in favor? Motion passes unanimously. We are now on board policies.
There are board policies for, for approval this evening. These, of course, have gone through review and gone through our board policy committee and through a first reading, so we are ready to seek approval for these policies tonight. Do we have any questions?
Any questions? Again, we've seen these a few times. So, is there a motion?
I move to approve the board policies as presented.
Is there a second? All those in favor? Motion passes unanimously. We are now on committee reports. Are there any committee reports?
I had a board of directors meeting last weekend. Not much information to pass along right now. It's a lot of work in progress, so in the April meeting, I'll have a lot more to share then. Just a reminder of Legislative Day on February thirteenth. And then, our regional meeting will be May second. Just for a calendar date for you.
Thank you.
Lindsay Tom from the Wellness Committee has resigned her position. She canceled our workout for the twentieth before she quit, but, so hopefully we can schedule another staff workout. I know all of you are looking forward to that.
Yeah, we, I enjoyed the last one. I was very sore, but I enjoyed it.
We'll schedule another one.
Okay.
I'm not sure actually, you know, who's gonna take over Lindsay.
Right. We'll have to figure that out.
Get the Wellness Committee going again.
There were a few injuries after that first one, wasn't there?
Not serious, not serious.
There's a difference between pain and injury.
There you go. There you go. I was in pain.
That's, that's a fair assessment. Any other committee reports? I would like to highlight that Dr. Volker and I spent Tuesday at a Missouri Task Force for trying to come up with ways to help better serve the mental health needs of our state, our, our students of our state. Department of Mental Health was there. There were a lot of big dogs at the table on that. It was very informative. So, it'll be interesting to see where we land on some of that, but found that to be a very resourceful task force to be a part of.
Yes.
Policy, strategic planning, we're good on that. Anything else? I know we've been pretty swamped with a lot of the other things going on. Okay. We are now on superintendent comments.
Okay. Once again, Dr. Montes says, sorry, couldn't be here this evening, of course. We want to start by offering our condolences to Sydney Steinhurst's family. I know we notified you guys today. Unfortunately, we had a freshman that passed away due to stage four liver cancer. It was very rapid in its progression. It's very sad. It was a very sad day at the high school, of course. And so, we just want to offer our prayers and condolences to that young lady's family. She was a member of our Raypek Cross Country Team. And I, I just, it's a very sad time. So, prayers and condolences go out to Sydney's family, for sure, and all those impacted by that. We want to invite everyone to the court-warming game on Friday, tomorrow night, at Raypek High School. And I believe they will have their dance on Saturday. So, that's a big event. We also would like to everyone to sponsor our Raypek teams for the Polar Plunge Saturday. There's still an opportunity. Dr. Montes has been talking about it quite a lot. I'm sure he's really looking forward to it. So, Mr. Westco has promised not to pressure me into it this year, but I think he's gonna break that promise. I think it's something that, it, it's a great cause and it's something I'd like to encourage. If you're not gonna run in, that you at least donate and sponsor and, and participate in that way. So, thank you for that, not pushing that, Mr. Westco. I'd also want to talk about and plug the February tenth, Good Neighbor, Strong Community. We have people signing up. We, our keynote speaker's super excited about Dayton Moore and Carrie Casey and all the great people that we have coming to Raypek to speak and talk about building a strong community, what it takes to do that and all the supports. We've got great, great breakout sessions on suicide prevention, numerous other topics, safety, online safety, all sorts of things. So, that's gonna be a great day. If you can get that out, we're still, people can go to our website, sign up for that. It's an exciting event. I can't thank Kim Bailey, Allison Scott, the people that are working really hard, our Belton and Raypek Foundations, Raypek Cares, everybody who's really, and the school board as well, who's pitched in and put a lot of effort in that. So, looking forward to that on February tenth. And we have our gala on February, I think it's twenty-fourth. So, that's always a fun event and we've moved it to a new location. I think it's at Centerview?
You're stealing my whole comment.
Sorry. I'm sorry about that. I'm just telling me what the boss has told me to say.
It's at Centerview in Raymore.
Centerview. Also, we want to congratulate our spelling bee winner, Olivia Burton. Olivia's the daughter of one of our high school teachers, John Burton. So, very excited about that. Proposition RP, I can't say that enough over the next months and just how important that is. I invite everybody to review the information on the website. We continue to place very valuable, informative information. We have a lot of people sending by us and everybody's working very hard in our district to put timely, accurate information so our community can make an informed decision. We really believe if they take a look at that information, they'll be able to do that. So, it's good information. We would like them to take a look. Also, if they want, Dr. Montes, Pam Steele, they can contact if they have a group that they believe would be interested in hearing a presentation regarding that levy campaign. So, make sure you contact Dr. Montes or Pam Steele if you have a group that believes would like to hear that. So, they, they would absolutely schedule that. And I want to end by thanking the Board of Education one more time for all your hard work. You're very committed to our students and staff here at Raypek and that's very obvious. So, we thank you for it.
I'd like to take a moment of silence for Sydney. So, I, I appreciate that we're part of a community that cares and we, our heart goes out to her family. Are there any board comments?
Thank you to Ego Glenn for our lovely video.
That was awesome. That brought a tear to my eye. I'll admit.
And I'm not gonna pressure you to plunge, but I will say, I know how much it would mean to Carrie if you were there to watch him go in the water.
I could maybe do that.
And, and, and have the, the cup of hot chocolate waiting for him.
Take something hot.
As, as he comes out of that water, because, you know, he's so dedicated to our kids.
Right, he is.
And so, you know, I know it'd mean a lot if you were there.
Thank you, Mr. Westco. Appreciate that.
I would like to reiterate the conference. I'm so excited for the feedback we're getting. If I can say it on air, Grand View Superintendent, Higman Mills Superintendent are just excited for, and sees the breakout sessions as very powerful. The main speakers has been very powerful. We're really getting good feedback. So, so if we could just get the word out, that would be great. But again, some of the breakout sessions are gonna be Children's Mercy. We have Vicky Hartzler, our Congresswoman that represents our district, will be here. We have Highway Patrol. It's, it's just, it's a phenomenal resource. There's been a lot of people who have worked on this and it's, it's an amazing conference. We just gotta get the people to take advantage of it, so.
And everyone's invited, parents, teachers, community, everyone.
Everyone. This is, this is not education-focused. This is a community-focused. To, to be summative, I know we've probably addressed this before, but there are a lot of issues and these are community issues. So, we're trying to raise community awareness, connect our community to free or cheap resources that are there that we just don't know about. But then also teach them how they can get engaged. The number one way that we can treat a lot of these issues is just by getting engaged. So, it'll have opportunities on how to do that. Alright, thank you.
Well, I would just like to remind everyone about the gala. I serve on the foundation board and I'm chairperson of the gala again this year. It's my favorite, one of my favorite jobs. We are excited to be having it at Centerview, the new location in Raymore. We'd had it at Lock Lloyd before just for, you know, that's a nice place but for lack of somewhere in, in the district to have it. So, we're very excited to be hosting it in district. It's on February twenty-fourth, starting at five-thirty at Centerview. And we're expecting lots of fun and excitement and there's gonna be a video and.
Right. It's a great event. It really is.
Great food. The, the committee had to, you know, go taste and sample food. It's something that has to be done. And we landed on some really good food, so we're excited. So, tickets are available online on the Facebook page for the foundation or by contacting Jody Houston.
Any other comments?
I was able to go to the high school planning meeting. I'm in denial, but I do have a freshman next year.
You do. You cannot deny that. I'm sorry.
I, I, I do too.
Yes, yes, so do I.
It was very informative and just from a parent's perspective.
Good.
I really appreciated the time that that must have taken to get it all organized and the fact that people had to stay after so parents could come in the evening. But it, there's such choice. It feels like it's very important choices because we're talking about careers directions that they're gonna go in their life. And so, it really kind of made me feel better about what we're gonna choose for the next four years.
I appreciate that comment. I know the high school worked hard on that and they did intentionally move that up an entire month so we could involve the parents more and in a deeper level in that very important process. So, I, that was very on their part. They were thoughtful. They came to us at Academic Services and Administration and said, we'd like to do this. We think this is better for our parents. And those, that's a great thing.
Yeah, I would say thank, I would say thank you as well. It was very nice being able to walk around and to talk to, you know, the math teachers about what, okay, tell me exactly what do those three different math options mean and what are the consequences of those? And yes, we can print it on things and read it, but there's something about being able to talk to that teacher and hear them explain it that does make a parent feel a lot better.
You know, and it's interesting because we forget how many choices we have as a district until we have a parent and I, and we've got a student that grade. You know, so, yeah, I think it's a great way to highlight. We have so many choices.
We do.
In our school district.
We do.
Across every level.
So, yeah, thank you all for just bringing that up and we'd definitely like to thank the high school staff for their hard work with that.
I also want to just take this time to reiterate the levy that we are voting on so that we had decided on a seventy-five cent levy in order to get our teacher salaries competitive with our neighboring districts.
Which is net forty-five.
Which is net forty-five. So, net forty-five means that because our administrators have done such an amazing job managing the money, we actually have a debt reduction.
A reduction to our debt levy.
Debt services levy of thirty cents, yes.
Earlier than had, we had anticipated. So, that means that that tax is gonna go down thirty cents so that although we're asking for seventy-five cents, the differences of tax is only gonna be forty-five cents because the debt services is going down thirty cents. So, to be able to do that is amazing. But just for reference, Belton pays their teachers and their staff thousands of dollars more a year than we pay ours. Most of our surrounding districts pay their employees thousands of dollars more. We are way under the curve on that and we are getting quality services for that and we really deserve to pay them a competitive salary and competitive benefit. So, I just want to keep putting that out there. If you could share that word that even though it's a seventy-five cent tax levy, the net is only a forty-five cent tax difference. And we really are at a critical point on this. We've, we really need, I mean, there's just, just quoting one, I just got a text today, twelve thousand dollar difference in salary. And that's not a high-paying position. So, we really need to pay our teachers competitively to, in order to continue on with excellence.
Our staff as well. And I think it's just important to note that this would impact.
Everyone.
The entire spectrum.
Well, and I just want to add on. It's, you know, you, you know that, that things have, have come to a, a critical point when the, the teachers that we have that went here, that, you know, they, they spend their entire twelve years here. They go to college and then they come back here to work. When we start losing those people to other districts. And we, and we are, we have been.
Yeah.
I, I don't think the, the general public understands the amount of hemorrhaging of that good, quality teacher that we're starting to experience. And because there's just not a lot of people moving into the teaching areas that the demand for high quality is so high that if we're gonna want to attract and retain quality staff and make sure that we maintain a quality district, we have to take that next step and at least be competitive with districts around us or else we're not gonna attract quality staff. And then, that has a negative effect down the road.
Absolutely.
Well, and we have done, as a whole, as a district, we've done very well with the resources that we have. But it's time we've gotta get in the game or we're just gonna keep floundering where we sit and not be able to move on with some of these other things and the strategic plan that we want to do. So, we've gotta step up.
Any other? I would just like to add, this is my final comment on this, that Dr. Montes, I know there's a lot of politics around superintendent's salaries. So, he is freezing his salary. So, even though all of the others, he's offered to have his salary be freeze so it wouldn't impede people voting for this tax levy. So, just wanna, that's, that's the kind of superintendent we have. Alright, are there, we're on calendar of events. February eighth is a work session. At six PM, we've got February twenty-second is our next board meeting.
February ninth is our first Cass County Kids First Breakfast when we will meet their legislators for the first time this session.
February ninth?
Thank you. February ninth.
At seven-thirty at Belton.
Ninth AM, I'm guessing?
Uh, yeah, AM, sorry.
Belton. Okay. You said seven AM?
Seven-thirty.
Seven-thirty.
There's still lots of uproar and everything with State Board and everything, so it'll be fun.
Yes, there's a lot of, a lot going on there. Alright, if there's nothing else, then this meeting is adjourned.
Thank you.